Hello, everyone, and welcome to FYI Oxbridge. My name is Barry Giles. I am your host and station manager here at Oxbridge Community Television. FYI Oxbridge is a program about the people, places, and events happening here in our town of Oxbridge. And today, my returning guest is our town manager, Mr. Steve Setti. Steve, how you doing?
Good morning, Barry. How you doing?
Doing well, doing well. Well, it's October.
Yep.
So three things happened in October. Pumpkin Spice Coffee's back, we have Halloween, and we have our annual Fall Town Meeting.
There you go.
So, I'm assuming we don't have coffee in front of us and no pumpkin, so we're going to be talking a little bit about the town warrant for the Fall Town Meeting, which will be happening on Tuesday, October 22nd, 7:00 PM, at the Valley Chapel, which is on 14 Hunter Road here in town, where we've been having it for the past few years. So, all right, let's jump right into it. The usual Article 1 is bills for prior fiscal year.
Before I start, I just want to let everybody know that this meeting should be different than the meetings we had in the past, especially the May meeting where it's mostly financial and a lot of budget issues. This is more housekeeping-type things. We are going to try to do a consent agenda for a number of items, so that would shorten the meeting as well. But for the most part, this should be very straightforward and very simple to get through and not as complicated as the meetings we've had in the past. I know, you know, last time, we had to come back a couple of times to get a budget, but this time, I think we should be able to get everything in in one evening.
Excellent.
So, starting right off, Article 1, bills of prior year, is exactly what it is. These are bills that the town doesn't pay prior to June 15th of the previous fiscal year. So what happens is those bills get carried forward into the next year or the next opportunity to pay those bills. That is obviously this meeting. There are a number of bills that total about $45,000. Now, that would sound like a big number, but most of them are national grid bills, a lot of utility-type things makes up about two-thirds of that cost, and the rest are just a couple of things here and there that don't get paid, but gives us the opportunity to pay our bills as we like to do with our various vendors. So that certain things don't get shut, especially national grid, we don't want the light shut off.
Exactly.
So we got to make sure we pay those bills.
Excellent.
Article 2, similar. It's the fiscal '25 budget adjustment. There are a couple of line items after we've done the budget for the year that need more money put to them. None of these budget adjustments are going to result in any increase in taxes to the taxpayer. They're from other sources of funds that, you know, we have. One in particular that I want to call out is, you'll see, there's $122,000 going to the school department. That's from the, it says the funding source, the cherry sheet. The cherry sheet is the document we get from the state every year, which lists all the funding that the state provides to the town of Oxbridge. This past year, when we went to the May town meeting, we were working off the number that was on the House Ways and Means Committee budget, the governor's budget subsequently was signed later on, and that included additional funding to the school department to represent appropriate per-people costs that's equivalent to regional schools and other school districts. So the $122,000 is additional funds going to the school coming from the state, so again, does not represent any additional funds to the taxpayer. And one other thing that's on that list is, when free cash is certified, what we'd like to do is put an additional $500,000 into the care and condition of roads. That was a number that we had, this will represent the number that we wanted to have in the budget this year, but because of constraints in the budget, we had to reduce the budget this year. So we're, you know, we have free cash to be able to do that. It allows us to continue the work on Menden Street in particular, to finish Menden Street right up to the State Road. So I think people hopefully will be happy to see more money going into doing those things.
Yes. Excellent. Okay, so Article 3, appropriation of funds for legal settlements.
Right. This is for Caroline's Cannabis. If you remember, we were involved in some litigation with Caroline's regarding payment of impact fees. We ended up negotiating a settlement with Caroline's. That settlement was for $1,171,633.60. That's about 75% of what they paid us. Now, again, you see the source of funding for this is from free cash. Reason for that is the money that we had collected previously on impact fees went into the town basically reserved, but it does clear the free cash at the end of each fiscal year. So the money is coming out of free cash to pay for it. This represents money they paid us and we're just paying it back.
Okay.
So it's not, again, no additional funds that we had to raise, no additional funds that, you know, that we had, other than the fact that had the litigation not taken place, we would have been able to potentially use that money somewhere down the road.
Right.
But it had to be for a related impact from cannabis.
Right.
So that's what this settlement's for.
Okay, great. And Article, moving on, Article 4, appropriation of free cash for pay bands.
Right. So this, from this point on, the 4 to 9 is what we're looking at for consent items. These are just normal, you know, transactions that take place on a regular basis. In this case, we're looking to appropriate $281,356.85 and to pay bands. What bands are our bond anticipation notes that you take out, usually short-term funding for things that you might want to consider bonding, you know, in the future. The items that we, back on, actually, the fall meeting in 2020, we purchased a DPW Mack truck, a fire utility truck, and another DPW utility truck at the time, and we had taken a ban out on it. At this point, the amount that we're looking to appropriate here pays that off completely.
Okay.
So there won't be any additional bonding or additional funds going towards that. So, again, we had the free cash to do it, and we decided, working with our financial advisors, this is a good use of that money.
Right.
So we decided to pay the ban off completely.
Great.
On Article 5, it's, this is a transfer to our OPEB trust. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. Those are the responsibilities of the town for any of our employees, either retired already or to retire in the future. It's an actuarial formula that determines what that is, and it fluctuates from time to time. Just so people know, currently, the unfunded liability for that's a little over $83 million. Significant amount of money. We're not different than any other community. Everybody has this unfunded liability. There is an ability to put money into a trust fund to help pay this, to help account for this in the future. Right now, we have $605,000, a little over that, in that account. We're looking to add another $350,000, again, for free cash, because we have the money to do that. Will put us a little over $1 million, which is only about a .6 funding ratio, but it's getting us on track to be where we need to be.
Right. And this has been going on for years. They've been trying to catch up with this.
Yeah, and actually having the number. The interesting thing I found out about this is, based on your bond rating, which is another reason we're doing this, because we want to show the bonding and the rating companies, we have these things in place, the better your bond rating, the lower the factor it is based, when they do the calculation on the actuaries do for the calculation. So this $83 million number, five years from now, even though we're only investing maybe 350, let's say a half a million dollars a year, might be down to, say, $53 million.
Right.
But it's because our credit rating and everything else got better. So, a lot of moving parts here.
Right.
But we're on our way to funding it, which is the important thing. Article 6 is going to be a transfer to stabilization. Now, normally, this is one of the second or third articles we have on a town meeting warrant, you know, in the future. So next fall, you'll probably see this move back up.
Right.
And this is on some feedback from talking of both Finance Committee and the Select Board. What we're doing here is we're taking $2 million of the free cash that we're anticipating, and we're going to put it into the stabilization fund. Stabilization fund, right now, is at 3.7 million. We're about 6.43% of the current annual budget. By adding the $2 million in to this, will put us about 5.7, which will give us a funding of somewhere in the neighborhood of 8% to 10%.
Okay.
More where we want to be.
Right.
And, you know, again, it's one of the things the rating agencies like to see. Now, in the future, rather than even having a, the next article would be a transfer to capital stabilization.
Right.
Rather than having that in the future, we might just put everything into stabilization, rather than doing just a, you know, a portion here and a portion there.
Right.
And again, some of that is, when we split it, again, rating agencies look at and say, well, they don't even count the capital stabilization. So we're going to have probably $5 million or close to $5 million in capital stabilization, but they don't look at that as a savings account, because they know that's going to be spent over time.
Right.
When you park it all into your regular stabilization, it's viewed as more of a savings-type account.
Okay, because I was just about to ask you, can you explain what a stabilization account is?
Yeah.
It's been used so many terms, you know, rainy day fund and all these other things.
Exactly. Right. And again, that's a good term, but it's basically a savings account. And really, what it is, if a catastrophe happens, you know, we don't collect taxes because, you know, there's a, for some reason, a breakdown in the economy in the United States. That's the money that we have put aside to pay our bills, so we can keep government moving for a period of time. So that's what that's there for. It's also there if we have a major catastrophe in town and we need, you know, $1 million to fix something.
Right.
We can hold a special town meeting, vote that money out for that specific purpose, but it comes out of that stabilization.
Okay. Yeah, I know, over the past years, it's been called many, many things.
Yeah.
And everybody's like, oh, well, we have in stabilization. We got this, we got that, we should use it.
Sometimes it's used as, called a reserve fund.
Right.
It could be a lot of things, but the bottom line, it's to, you know, that we have it as a percentage of the budget specifically for the fact that it allows us to be able to pay our bills.
Right, exactly.
So.
Okay, moving to Article 7.
Again, that's, we mentioned earlier, about transfer to capital stabilization. Actually, Article 7 and Article 8 both have to do with capital and putting more money into capital. We're going to put, we're requesting $1 million be transferred into capital stabilization. That'll give us, again, somewhere in the neighborhood, it's 3.4 million, a little bit, I think it's a little bit higher than that now, but somewhere in that neighborhood. And then the next article, Article 8, the town accountant went through all old town meeting votes that had anything to do with capital, going back to 2020, basically. So for the last four years, anywhere where there's funds that weren't expended and completed projects, he swept those accounts. So it's going to be tuned to the tune of about $197,000. So it'll be another 197 going in there as well.
Great. Okay, and then Article 9?
Right. It'll be similar to the article above, except this was a, this has to do with stabilization, the account we spoke about earlier. In 2021, at the fall meeting, we authorized $30,000 to be used for the demolition of the old fire station on North Main Street. Subsequently, someone bought that property and converted it to the Fire Museum, so we didn't need to use the $30,000. And what we're doing is, we're going to put the $30,000 back into stabilization. So that'll increase that. We put $2 million, so it's actually $2,030,000 that's going into stabilization.
Great. Okay, so Article 10, looks like this will be passed over.
Passed over, yeah.
Okay, great. Moving along to Article 11.
Right. This is the establishment of a special injury or injured-on-duty account. Police and fire, you know, from time to time, due to the natures of their job, have times where, you know, our employees get hurt on the job. Based on that, they get paid differently than typical workers' comp-type thing. We self-insure for this, so we have to pay out, and then we get reimbursed a portion of that from the insurance company. Many times, if, you know, if three or four people in the police department or the fire department might go out on IOD or injured-on-duty, that puts a drain on the department budget. So what this will do is, it's going to be a fund of $100,000 that will establish that, so that we have that fund to exhaust before we exhaust any of the budgets of either the departments.
Right. Great, sounds like a great article to have. Disposition of unclaimed properties, is Article 12?
Right. This gives the town treasurer-collector the ability to collect funds that have been held by the town for more than a year on accounts of, you know, it could be overpayment of taxes and people move out of town, a number of different things. You know, other leaned-type funds that are on a particular account that currently would last, I used the word last night, in perpetuity. But really, you know, until this provision of the law allowed the towns to only hold those funds, you know, allow those funds to be held that way for a year. And after a year, if the funds aren't claimed, they come back to the town.
Okay.
So we're looking to do that and give the treasurer-collector the ability to do that.
Great.
And we'll have the numbers about how much that would be right now for town meeting.
So, I should also mention that we haven't been mentioning this as we go along. Each article has been voted on by recommendations by the Board of Selectment and the FINCOM, and as I'm browsing through, the majority of them have been.
Unanimous.
You know, unanimous decisions on this.
Yeah, I think there might be only one, that there might be a no vote, and the no vote wasn't because they didn't agree with the article in the action. It was, had to do more with, and we mentioned earlier about moving everything into stabilization versus splitting it. The no vote was the person, the thought that it all should go there versus being split.
Okay.
So it wasn't a negative to the article, it was just process.
Right.
More than anything.
Okay.
And we'll mention that at town meeting as well.
Sure.
And the fact that going forward, we, you know, it'll move it into stabilization that way.
Okay, great. All right, Article 13.
These are some transfers in the water department. They're looking to transfer $185,000 from retained earnings, which is their savings, similar to what the stabilization would be for general town stuff. Because the water department operates as an enterprise fund, it's all based on what the ratepayers put in. These are purchases that the DPW, the water division, is looking to make. So there's three different items. There's a superintendent's vehicle, a CAT 305 mini excavator with attachments and a trailer, the trailer that. Those three things total $185,000. And then also $25,000 from those funds to cover the employees that work for, work in the water department, their contribution to OPEB.
Okay.
So those are the three totals. So it's a total of $210,000 from retained earnings.
Great. Okay, continuing with the water.
Yep.
Enterprise account, Article 14, water enterprise borrowing authorization.
Right. This is a, it's a water main replacement project on Douglas Street. We're looking to borrow for, I'm sorry, yes, looking to borrow $4,220,000 to pay for the cost of this project. It's one that needs to be done, and this will be along portions of Route 16, Douglas Street. And they were identified as deficient in all areas and designated as a high priority for replacement. So that's what this will be, this project will be. It'll be done in conjunction with the road project that's going to go over there already. It's scheduled 2027. So the drainage will be done first, and then the road, the road project will be done on top of it. So we need to have one done before the other, because once a road's done.
You don't want to rip it up again.
For five years, you can't touch it.
Yeah.
So we said, let's get all new line in there now, and then that way we don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
And Article 15's similar, in that we have East Street area for improvements, and this is to acquire permanent and temporary easements. And this is to include the improvements to the water distribution area service in East Street. Also includes the construction of a replacement booster pumping station. For years, there's been an issue with water pressure and a number of other things, quality of water in that area, and this is a step in correcting that.
Great. Okay, Article 16.
This has to do with wastewater. This is, again, similar to the transfers in the water division. This is also for, this is also through retained earnings that the wastewater division has. It's a, the total amount would be $391, and it's to increase the SCADA, which is Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Server. You know, everything's electronic now.
Right.
So it's to upgrade that server, which is, which is, which needs an upgrade, a Kubota compact tractor loader with accessories, and a trailer for that as well. And that's $391,000 total. I can tell you that this did, actually, both water and wastewater items did receive the same kind of vetting they would had they gone through the capital process.
Right.
As a normal capital, since capital doesn't control these funds.
Right.
This is done by the water commissioners, which are the Select Board, and they asked for the same data, the specs and everything else and all the materials, so, and they were comfortable with what was looking to be purchased and what was being spent.
Okay, great. Article 17, Linwood Street and Church Street Drainage Replacement.
Right. We have, we've already gone out to bond, or this is part of a bond that we approved a couple of years ago. Now it's to go out and actually get the easements that we need to do the drainage work that needs to be done on Linwood Street. Once those are all acquired, then the project will begin and hopefully change that, the drainage that's there. There's been some significant flooding in that area in the past, and this hopefully will improve that.
Great. Article 18, Veterans Tax Abatement, Annual COLA Increase.
Right. Every bi-year, bi-annual basis, we do get, you know, we do have an article on to increase a COLA. This is for the veterans' tax. Currently, what we have, and it's a exemption that's governed by inflation, the COLA, and based on what that number is, and, you know, through the CPI each year, we get an idea what the COLA is and the increases applied to whatever tax abatement is. The next article that you're going to see, you know, has to do with additional exemptions. The amounts of the exemptions haven't increased in 15 years, so this is looking to change those exemptions and basically double what the exemptions are from $400 to $800, and, you know, and the other one would be up to $1,000.
Great. Helping out our veterans. That's awesome. All right, so that's going to skip us up to Article 20, which is a continuance of Old Lackey Dam Road.
Yeah, Old Lackey Dam Road is a road right now that has a business that's on one side of it and a property owner on the other who's looking to establish a business on that property. Old Lackey Dam Road basically goes nowhere. So what they've asked is the streets, the street be discontinued.
Okay.
And then subsequently, you know, obviously, we would have to, the board would have to declare an RFP for the discontinued portion. They can sell that. The two property owners have expressed an interest in purchasing that land from the town, both to make their footprint a little bit bigger. One of the properties is the current gas station that's over there, and another is, again, is another property that's looking to put a business there. So, you know, it makes good sense for us to do this at this point. One of the other things was there was some, that portion, that parcel actually abuts town of Douglas as well. There's some utilities that are over there. The utilities are the responsibility, the town of Douglas have already moved the pole, the power lines and poles and all that. So this allow, just to make it, the footprint change a little bit for both businesses over there.
Great. And just to let viewers know that in the warrant, there's actually a map that explains.
Yes.
And shows the detail of all that.
Yep.
All right, moving on, we are up to Article 21.
This is going to be a passover.
This one's going to be a passover?
Yeah, this is a passover as well.
Okay.
So we go to Article 22, which is various amendments to the town zoning bylaws. The ZBA basically looked at the zoning bylaws, and there's no substantive changes that they're making in there, other than some grammatical changes, some strike-throughs and all that, and changing those things. There's some definitions that needed to be updated that they're looking to do as well, specifically around, you know, what a fueling station is versus what a gas station is.
Right.
Because obviously, fueling is a little bit different now.
Right.
It's not only, it's not only gas, it's, you know, it's electric, there's other type of fuel that's being used, sort of to better define what those items are. So they're doing that. And then also, a couple of other things around what a private horse stable is versus a public stable and those kind of things.
Okay. So once again, housekeeping.
Right, but the one thing I will say, because I know this has come up, the item, the issue dealing with battery storage facilities, there is no change to the zoning bylaw that specifically talks about battery storage.
Okay.
That's going to, that'll be somewhere down the road, as this is an evolving-type thing. But I want people to know that this doesn't include that, because I think people might get a little concerned that something's being snuck.
Snuck through, right, exactly.
And that's not what's happening here.
Okay. Okay. Article 23, amendment to general bylaws.
Right, and when you look at this, it said numbering of buildings, you go, why would that have to be amended? Well, currently, the responsibility for that lies in the building department, yet it's the assessor who assesses, you know, has to go out and has the plat maps and everything else. So this is going to make everything a lot easier for people to understand, because everything going forward on any projects, et cetera, instead of being a plat number, a plot number.
Right.
And somewhere down the road, an address, or sometimes they're used interchangeably and people kind of, what are you talking about?
Right.
Everything will be defined now. So if you're building a house on, you know, 17 Elm Street, it'll be 17 Elm Street that you look at. And that number will be assigned by the assessor, so that the numbering is consistent with, maybe there's, you know, another part of the street that's an older part, those kind of things. So it'll be, it'll be done that way.
Right.
So that's what.
Actually, I'll be honest with you, incident when we just recently, a few years ago, bought our home in Menden, and to this day, if you use Google Maps.
Yep.
My address doesn't come up.
Yeah.
It comes up as a lot.
Yeah.
And people are like, I can't find your house, and they're right in front of it.
Yeah.
They're like, because the lot number's gone.
Yeah.
You know, it's a house number now. So this will make things so much easier for residents to find.
Yep.
Plus, police and fire department, sometimes if technology does not keep up with everything that goes on.
Everything is delivered to your house, too.
Right.
It's all done that way as well.
Oh, yeah.
It's all coordinates that go to the driver, and the driver files the coordinates to deliver.
Yeah, for the longest, for over a year. I remember Christmas time, I was getting my neighbors' packages, which were like seven or eight houses away, and stuff like that. All right, wrapping up the warrant is Article 24, amendment amend the general bylaws, Section 20-4.
Right. This has to do with duration of contracts. What it does is it gives us consistency with state statutes, both for the school department and for the municipality. Law changed recently, it allows you to go out to five-year for contracts versus what was currently three.
Right.
In our bylaw, we also had three. So what this does is allows the school or the town to enter into a five-year contract, but that contract has to be approved at town meeting. So the residents still have a say on it, should have to explain what the benefit of the contract would be. So, you know, it could be equipment that you have here in the studio. You might be looking to purchase that equipment, and your vendor would say, well, if you commit for a five-year contract, you know, I can give you a better price on XYZ, you know, piece of that. And it allows you to save some money, allows you maybe to stretch those dollars a little bit further. So, you know, we're hoping that people will give both the schools and the town the ability to do that and to make better business decisions.
Great. Excellent. All right, and that wraps up the warrant for the Tuesday, October 22nd town meeting, Fall Town Meeting. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Steve?
Yeah, just as we always ask, is, you know, for people to get out to the meeting. I know this one isn't going to take as long as what previous meetings do, so if you can, you know, take that couple of hours on Tuesday night to come out and come out to the meeting, that'd be great.
True.
You know, and then obviously, that's the best part of town meeting. I think I say this all the time, I love the fact that we still have a town meeting, where the people have a say in, you know, any of the business that's transacted by the town, you know, either budget-wise or some of these other changes that may happen. It's their voice. It's their voice. And, you know, this is also maybe a good opportunity for people that, instead of complaining about things.
Right, get involved.
On social media or other ways, it's your ability to get involved.
Right.
Or at least come and see how government works. And then realize, we do put the time in to bring these things forward and make these decisions, versus it just, yeah, we'll just follow along what everybody else does.
Exactly. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, and as I always like to remind people, you can go to uxbridgetv.org and review any of the meetings discussing any of these articles and so on, including the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and FINCOM.
Yep.
Voting their recommendations and so on. And once again, fall town meeting will be on Tuesday, October 22nd, at 7:00 PM at the Valley Chapel at 14 Hunter Road here in Uxbridge, Massachusetts. Steve, thanks again for joining me.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you for watching, and if you want more information about the show or Local Access TV, you can find me on the town website, along with the town warrant, we should mention that. You can get the town warrant ahead of time and review it, you can have questions to come prepared at the town meeting. So, once again, you can check us out on the town website, which is uxbridge-ma.gov, and you can find any information regarding any of these articles there also. Okay, thank you again for watching.
Go Spartans.